As it was on private property. Under our narrative, incident narratives for the month, October 5th, first watch crews were dispatched to 5100 block of Dayton River Road on an endangered missing subject. It was a black female. The call came in zero five fifty hours about a subject that left the residence and had factors of risk associated with her well-being. We searched the area. K nine was requested to attempt to track. It was a heavy fog that night, so it kind of hampered the search for that individual. But around daybreak, a little after eight in the morning, incoming second watch county crews located subject walking out between two houses and one of the flats. So they were transported to N V H for cautionary reasons, just to be evaluated. But for all intents and purposes, no visible injuries or anything like that. So good interview to that one. October 8th, 2021, first watch Jefferson crews and first watch Jefferson and county crews were dispatched to the All Billings apartment complex on an anonymous call of shots being fired in the 7400 block of Bronson. Caller indicated two cars got off and there was screaming heard in the area. The complaint could not be reached for additional information. Our crews parked around the perimeter of the complex and walked in on foot. Were unable to locate any seen any subjects or any victim to that particular call. On October 9th, 2021, third watch Jefferson crews were dispatched to an injured crash in the 7900 block of State Route four. That crash was located and it was learned that a motorcycle traveling southbound struck a female who was along the roadway, managed to change a tire on a car. You know, pretty much a low life, low visibility situation going down through there at that time of night that contributed to that. The collision caused serious injuries to the female, but they were non-life threatening. The motorcycle was thrown from the vehicle and sustained non-life injuries as well. Both parties were sent to local hospitals for treatment. We had traffic services call out for accident reconstructionist as a result of that particular crash to handle that investigation. The pedestrian and the female changed his tire, was too close to the roadway. So that was the at-fall party in that particular case. Although there were issues with the operator of the motorcycle as well, such as the L O L. On October 12th, 2021, Jefferson Township second watch crews were contacted by a domestic violence victim. This victim had been assaulted the prior day and held against her will in their home. She was able to leave the residence the following morning as the suspect slept. And she made contact with deputies at our substation. We filed an offense report for abduction and domestic violence and felonious assault. She had sustained serious but non-life threatening injuries. And then we went down with the Jefferson and county crews to an address in the 5100 block of Altrum and located the suspect at the house and they were taken into custody without incident. On October 21st, 2021, first watch Jefferson and county crews were dispatched to the 7400 block of Bronson once again in the All Billings apartment complex. On the report, a single shot being fired. Upon arrival, there was a large group of individuals out on the Paul Tuckett side of the complex. We again set up a perimeter around the apartment complex and approached on foot. Made any contact with those subjects on Paul Tuckett. They did not hear any shot being fired. We proceeded across the Bronson, checked the area on foot. No seen disturbance or victim or suspect was located on that, if they recall either. On October 27th, 2021, third watch Jefferson and county crews were dispatched to 5350 West Third Street, Byitz Lounge. On the report of a person that had been shot. The victim was shot in the parking lot of the establishment and came inside to seek assistance. Special investigations responded to handle that investigation. The injuries were serious but considered non-life threatening to the victim. We have, I will say, we have proceeded to identify a suspect in that particular instance. And we are getting some cooperation in the follow-up investigation. More positive, on October 30th, 2021, Jefferson crews participated in trick-or-treat throughout the township, distributing candy to the kids. We also posted a deputy of St. Peter's Church had participated in the Trumpet Tree event. We also encountered some trick-or-treaters on the 31st as well, but we had enough candy left over to go ahead and handle that as well. So we did two nights of trick-or-treat. Traffic for the month of October, we had 12 traffic crashes, reflects an increase of nine or a decrease of nine investigation, which is a 42% decrease compared to October of 2020. Other crashes, five were property, six minor injury with eight people injured and one serious injury crash, which is that one on four. One crash involved hit-and-run, two crashes involved pedestrians and one crash involved suspected impairment. Mondays were the busiest day of the month, with five crashes. Failure to maintain reasonable control was the most common causative factor for the crashes. State Route four was our busiest roadway for crashes with four. And there was one hit-and-run reported during the month of October, which remains under investigation. And we made 49 traffic stops, 24 citations were issued overall, 13 for other moving violations and six for non-moving citations. If you travel to the section of U S 35 between Third Street and Liskum, you will notice that there are white hash marks painted alongside the roadway. That was completed by ODOT after being approved by Columbus. That is our speed zone that will be utilized for airplane enforcement. So we will be working on traffic blitzes in that zone. We have one coming up at the end of the month. And we will be utilizing aircraft to register speeds and make stops and continue to try to slow down some of the traffic. We had four dumping complaints during the month of October. Those remain under investigation. Total calls for service, 764, generated 138 reports. Had forensic services called to process crime scenes 24 times, five felony arrests, nine misdemeanors. That's really the big number, 62 suspicious subject situation or vehicle calls, seven vacation house checks, five weapons complaints, 19 welfare checks. We did apply for a grant with solid waste, which we had preliminary approval on, which more than to vote until January, February when the board reconvenes. But we will be utilizing that to push further on our illegal dumping camera program here in the township. It will cover six additional cameras and will provide cellular service for each camera for each year. So not only will they be there, we'll be able to get some real-time data via email. And then when they climb up the pole and try to steal them, we'll be able to see their face. So it'll be helpful to us. And the last thing I have is the new cruiser that we ordered several months ago for the township is due to arrive at the dealer this week. So we hope to take possession of that, start getting it put together. And then for the five patrol deputies in the township, we'll have three cars for them to share, which will save the wear and tear on the two that we currently have on the streets and hopefully prolong their life a little bit, especially with the situation ordering cars and, you know, the time it takes. I know some of the other townships ordered Dodge and they're still nowhere to be seen. So luckily we stopped with Ford and we were able to get that one in the same year. So I'm happy with that and that's all I have.
Can I ask you something?
No, you're gonna have to wait until citizens comments.
Okay.
Chief, write your report, please.
All right. We worked on band bills for last month, responded to emails and attended the trustee meetings and had meetings with Mr. Wolf. Had 15 resolutions to present, but there was not enough trustees present to vote. Crews done daily station chores and mowed the grass. EMS continued the Q A Q I on the EMS runs currently up to date. EMS training scheduled for December 1st due primary health topic was cardiology. EMS training continued daily for new Elclift Assistant Device. This will help prevent employees injury. EMS training scheduled for 2022 is done. And Lisa Hummel obtained her continuing education instructor certification. We had 137 EMS runs for the month, 29 fire runs per hour, seven auto accidents and 12 alarms. The daily shift people done training on all shifts. We had the chief's car service, repairs made on R C sixty-one and engine fifty-nine. One engine failed the pump test, two passed the pump test. Moved uniforms to the old training office at Station sixty to become the quartermaster storage. Worked with I P to determine issues with phones cutting out during use. The issue continues. Held first annual recognition banquet, appointed four new lieutenants and one new captain. Inspected one business within township. H R report interviewed several people for firing EMS positions. One person remains on orientation and we had two requests for fire reports.
That's it. Walk us through the operational readiness for our engines.
Do what?
Walk us through the operational readiness for the engines, why you had those resolutions on the last meeting.
The new engine that we got passed. The one that we have as a backup. We're having a pump problem with that. Sometimes it will prime, sometimes it won't. We've got one engine down at Station fifty-nine going down the road. It will jump into pump gear. One of the days this one jump into pump gear and the pump's not gonna be here. The third engine we have, the old Rosenbauer, the pump is cracked. So that's completely out of service.
Okay. Operational readiness for the medics?
Both medics are in good shape. We sent one Monday to get service. And then we got one down at Station fifty-nine that will be traded in when the new medic gets done. It's still operational, but we've got several major problems with it.
Any ETA from the vendors on the replacement generators?
I talked to them last Friday and they're still on the boat. They're getting closer, they said.
What about a rough guess, how many vacant shifts are we running right now?
We only had one last month.
So we're able to fill, we're not running this situation on vacant shifts? So we're fully staffed or running it pretty well?
We're part-time and when our people that we have running works two, three and four jobs. So it's hard to get people at times, especially weekends, to run. So that's the reason that we was wanting to hire these people. When we had our open Station fifty-nine up, we want to be able to have enough staff for both stations. We've been down at fifty-nines and the crews have been doing a lot of cleaning. The road departments hold a lot of traction weight force. And we've got two used engines that we've been looking at and talking to the dealers with. And a used ladder. I wanted to try and cut out as much mutual aid as possible because the stacking levels has been good except for the one weekend day that we had. But we're working on equipment.
What about the 1500 hours for your employees? A lot of them beat into that.
We have two that is out of hours. We've got four that's gonna run well and the others are in good shape. Because there are other jobs that they're at are not township related. Township departments is the only ones affected by the 1500 hour.
So with those resolutions, I have to catch everybody up. The board trustees voted to buy used fire truck because of the situation of our equipment is failing. It's not pass, I guess, it's not passing pump test. You have a fire truck show up, it may or may not be able to pump water based on the testing that we just had done on the equipment. So once we knew that it was gonna be almost two years to get a fire truck, we had some resolutions come through the table. First to buy some used equipment in Missouri. That was approved and then later in a meeting, that was rescinded. Now, there was resolutions to buy in this last meeting and there's been some visits to go look at equipment. Mr. Ralph, are you aware of the situation with fire trucks?
That's what you told me.
So where are you at on getting any other equipment?
We'll see about letting them back. Just because we have several million dollars in the bank doesn't mean we got the money to purchase these trucks. Got to look at finances. And since our finances aren't up to date, because the bills aren't getting paid, we can't make an honest decision.
Do we know what it would take to replace the pumps so how fast we could get them into service? So have you gotten any estimates on repairing the current equipment?
No, I don't know what the cost to replace the pump that you're talking, high dollars. But we can get an estimate on what's going to take. Do what, Tracy?
I said, cheaper than buying new equipment, because first of all, you can't afford the equipment.
We're not talking, we're not talking new equipment.
Well, you said fix it. I heard you say fix it, but it'd be cheaper to fix it than buying new equipment.
They're 2005s, yeah.
Okay, so you said 2005. Tell me about that. What's the point? What was the point saying 2005? If they work, they work, what does it matter if they're 2005? Explain that to them.
Because they was built as demo models only for dealers to take out to show departments. At the time they was bought, three was bought at the price of $75,000. The compartments are small, things are stacked in the compartments. If you want an exhaust fan out, you gotta take everything out to take the exhaust fan out. I can make you a list, but we're just trying to better the, because you don't know what you're talking about. We're trying to, we're trying to make it efficient for the people of the township. And when they call us, especially in the rural areas, we've got the water and we've got the apparatus.
No, you said, I don't know what I'm talking about, but I do know that what about the money that you don't know about? And I know that we can't afford that.
I see the money what's on your reports.
But you're not looking at the overall picture.
Oh, not? Okay.
No, you're not looking about that you bought a quick attack compressor that you got 12 years on that. You got a five-year loan on those remounted and that engine at $76,000. You got, I forget how much to put right out of hand. You got that 12-year loan, that quick attack, and then you're buying this engine. So where do you have more money to buy any more equipment?
It's on a loan, like you know.
Why tell me?
The loan company has already agreed for the two engines and the ladder. And if Mr. Wolf was here, he would explain to you.
But I'm, but he's not, so I'm asking you.
I don't know the full details.
But you're the fire chief, right?
I don't do finances, right?
Well, neither does Mr. Wolf.
I don't do your job.
Neither does Mr. Wolf, but you both tried.
He's the administrator. Do I ask you to sign a check?
No, he can't sign a check. He can't sign a check.
All right, well, I'm not crazy about buying a bunch of new equipment, but the repairs and how fast we can get a fire truck and a fire truck online, I'm not, I'm totally against relying on mutual aid to do the job and to tax everybody approved taxes to get us up and running. Now, we didn't count on the delays with COVID to get equipment. So in some cases, we're having to adapt to make things work. But the community expects the water to show up to their fire if something happens.
And I want it to show up.
So I guess we gotta start seeing some cost analysis to put all this together and not walk into a meeting with a bunch of spending resolutions to buy equipment. Speaking of new equipment, I've spent a lot of time working on the financing for the new fire truck. And we have it to the point, everything's turned in on time. According to the leasing firm, the loan vendor, it's called Lease Two, they're saying everything looks good in our application, except for the fact our attorneys are ironing out some language in the agreement. This happens especially on these bigger transactions. It's not a deal breaker, but it's being worked out and hopefully have some answers pretty soon. But everything seems to be in order. We've got today, we got some sort of thing from SUTFIM. It's gonna require trustee signatures at a notary. In the past, we go over to credit union over at the D A and they have a notary and they can help us get this signed and give it back. But I think this was supposed to be ran through legal. So I'm not gonna hack on these tonight, so I'm sure that we'll, there's a notary standing in the paper. We need to have that checked. Anything else? All right, citizens, by comments.
Okay, before you go, can you, yeah.
We need the backup under.
That's the old business?
This is old business. We need to approve an open meeting, the last shot of, is this carriage or our money?
Carriage.
Carriage money of $48,444. This is to buy 11 sets of fire fighter gear, 40 pair of extraction gloves, 16 pair EMS gloves, 18 hoods for EMS, 7 EMS helmets, 16 EMS coats, 16 EMS pants, 14 pair of fire gloves. I'll in favor of approving this purchase order for 48, by the 20, please say aye.
Who bought it, probably?
This is all American law.
So what was the last thing you said?
All in favor of say aye, or you wanna, or you wanna blow a call?
Aye.
What'd you say?
A good aye.
Okay, so I'll write the purchase order, you'll order the equipment, I'll order. And you'll give me the invoice and I'll pay it for you. You gotta give me a line item for the change.
Now, the, sure not here. It's gonna take probably three months, four months.
Well, you still need to give an invoice from them so we could pay them and tell them.
This year?
Down here, yeah.
Yeah.
And tell them you're gonna pay here and then you'll pay them.
We can do that.
Because we gotta use our money, we gotta send it back.
Right.
So we need any signatures on this or?
No, I don't. I just need, I just need that. I have to do a purchase order. You keep that other file. Just give me the purchase order. That'd be all right.
Yeah, I'm gonna sign another phone code.
I have the blue button there, up right here. I just don't have the other phone code.
All right, comments by citizens, before you address the trustees, please read your name and address for the record and then through that, draw a back, send a team on your album report.
I just want to, I noticed you brought up some document needed notarized and she was going to be darned for you was gonna go and get it notarized, am I correct? Isn't this officer a notary?
I should have got.
Yeah. You know, been a notary.
No.
I just wanted, that's all.
Thank you. Looks easier.
Sure does.
All right, thanks.
Lydia Rowley, 246 South Bunnin Mill. I have had trouble getting, let me take a look. I've had trouble getting people to answer the phone here. And I know over a month ago, Betty Williams was here and asked if you guys could open and you both, I thought from that meeting as well, I believe Betty thought as well that you guys want to open the offices back up or do something so that the public could get to answers. Anyway, regardless, I've tried, tried, tried. I can't get anybody, damn, my phone paused. So I have a public records request I'd like to give to somebody so that, give it to Tracy. Although on this public records request, I don't think Tracy is going to be able from the way that I've heard in meetings, so she may need the administrator and the fire chief to do this. So anyway, I'm submitting this, okay, I'm submitting this public records request.
What is it? Walk us through it.
Anyone is the blame one of this? Oh, I can't. I just didn't know we need to do that in public meeting when it's supposed to be chairman of the office. But I would like to know, I'm requesting a complete and detailed report of all money spent, items that the money was spent on and the recipients of each item of which the money was spent at the first annual awards ceremony held November of 2020. I'd like a prepared report by the chief, the administrator. I want someone to prepare the report that has the most knowledge of the above records. I understand that most of the money came out of the fire budget, from what I've been able to pick up. To be clear, I'm asking for a full accounting of the funds spent to which the dollars were used and to whom the awards were bought.
Go ahead.
Marion C Perry, 514 Altrum Road, Lake Ohio. They told for high performance events. I was born and raised and I grew up in Jefferson. And I've never seen such trash that I have to live under and deal with. I can't walk on the public street with my dog, but since it's winter, I can put him in the backyard. But that's hampering my need for exercise. Reason for exercise is health issues. I one night was watching my dog and I heard some neighbors say loudly, "Oh, I run this block." The whole street was Altrum. The country trash that we had living there said she runs the street. Then her brother said, "Oh, let me run the street." I shouldn't have to and half the people on that street shouldn't have to live under. that circumstance. They bother people. Now, hopefully, if winter gets a little bit here, they won't be out, I hope. But I also know, they say, I talk to people about a fellow who's ninety-six, he's one house torn down, that's his next one, and then I have the other problem of their friends visiting, but the problem being is, at my age, I can't walk fast. I suffer from certain things that most people have heard of, they call Arthur, he comes to visit, but won't leave. So, I can't walk fast. Here's the problem, why I'm saying I can't walk fast. They speed up the street, they speed down the street. They speed, they throw their trash out, and in winter times, we have ice and stuff, or whatever. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be amazing to walk in the street, because sometimes people don't clean their sidewalks, and if you run fast, they walk down the street, and then you never know what you're stepping on, because they even throw glass in the street. But nobody cares, nobody says, they're not doing what they say they're doing, but none of those people at that house are working. I'm ridiculous. But they call themselves working, and they're working to where they're working out of their house, and the friends are speeding up the street, and I've never seen all the streets in Jefferson be trashy. Now, when I walk near Campbell Lane, this was one guy, friend of theirs, he goes past that, I made it quick, he throws his trash out.
Need to wrap up.
I just did.
Thank you.
You feel better now?
Anybody else like to speak?
Don't know. I didn't fill out a form.
Just read your name and address in there.
Cindy Erickson Lawson, eight oh one Calumet Lane. I also own one-twenty-nine Calumet Lane. Right across the street is a meth house. It's known to everyone. My property across the street is vacant. I've offered it to the sheriff so they can shut down the house across the street. They have damaged my house, they've broken into the garage recently, and they're in and out of my yard more than I am. I just would like to know, I understand there's some battling going on, going on with the board here, but I'd like to know, as a taxpaying citizen who lives in Jefferson Township, we work for Jefferson Township, I wanna know what can be done, because there's three drug houses on this very street that I can point out at any given time. People are running up and down the road like there's a bar in the neighborhood, and ain't nobody doing nothing about it.
I understand.